Hello, I'm Adam and may I welcome you all to our planning highways environment meeting tonight. And if we can start with, well, four separate apologies for absence, we're swapping around, swapping around four and five, so that public participation will be before the basic presentation. Right, so apologies for absence, and I have been informed myself that councillor Matthew Scott is going to have to leave early, as part of his farming duties. And, oh, the other thing I was saying is unless you're a farmer, if you please make sure your mobile phone is turned off so don't get them ringing. If you're allowed, because you're supposed to call me loud, but. Okay, are there any other apologies for absence? No others? Okay. Minutes.
Minutes and trust.
Oh, yes, minutes and trust. Have any members got any interests on anything on tonight's agenda?
No.
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 Okay, right, now onto the minutes. Has everyone read the minutes of the last meeting?
Yes.
Everyone happy with them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody want to propose them, second, propose from the mass? Everybody in favour?
Yes.
Yeah. Come on, press the numbers. Yep, right, once the public participation session. And do you have anybody else to come to the team?
Councillor King has requested to speak.
Yeah. Councillor King, thanks very much, I'm sorry to bring this so quick at the last minute, but as I say, I'm trying to get between two different meetings. As you'll be well aware, the 5G rollout for the 5G mast at St Savy's school had been overrun by the Secretary of State and therefore they was requested open reach and their contractors to remove the equipment that they started to put in down there. At the moment, we're concerned because last week it was work going on all week down there and they were digging what like some kinds of traps to take the fibre optics from outside the store on the, by the way, the 100 miles to go. Now, we know that this has been overrun by the Secretary of State and KCC have been informed about it. So, what we'd like to do, because there seems to be some, we'll have to get to the state of confusion and rumour among women etcetera. It would be, I think it would be wise if Westgate Town Council officially sent an email to Kent County Council to get clarification when the equipment is going to be moved, as directed by the Secretary of State. Regarding that 5G, well, it won't be the 5G masts now. We hope, but there seems to be some maneuverings going on, so we want some complete clarification for it. So if we can add an email from Westgate Town Council to KCC for clarification of when the timetable will be enacted as laid out by the Secretary of State. Okay, thanks very much for listening to that, I'm sorry for what I've turned you into.
No, thanks for that consideration.
All right, you're quite thoughtful. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question on that one, if you need to do anything with it. Right, who else is?
Did you, sorry, did you say?
Yeah, this is a couple of, I wanted to clarify, you've got about the North Fanet Link highway improvement scheme. I just wanted to know, has anyone else sent any response to the presentation?
This is what, this is the agenda item for it to be just a response to be formed today.
Yeah.
Because you are aware that the proposed date tomorrow.
Correct.
Yeah. And can we have sight of your response after it's been submitted, please?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
No.
No, okay.
Oh, I beg your pardon, I'm sorry, we did have a comment online which I'll read, sorry, can everyone hear me or do you want me to use a microphone? And so this is from a Westgate resident, and she has stated, I cannot attend this meeting, but could I ask the committee to please urge TDC Fanet District Council to improve liaison with Kent County Council over the proposed North Fanet Link and the number of houses and the new options are planned to serve. One new road will not alleviate the considerable chaos that will ensure without integrated planning. The problems exist now without the proposed numbers increasing the volume of traffic on the aisle. I've sent my replies to the consultation, but it's only addressing the highways issue, not the wider integrated planning that is required. If this is in hand, I'm sorry for raising it, but I felt that the local consultation session that KCC, Kent County Council, would only address the highways planning concerns, not the wider issue of increasing volumes of traffic due to housing numbers. Their modelling is based on existing volumes of traffic and didn't seem to take.
We've been here, we would have been here already with rods when we hit up, so we can come out and load the whole network and then when we find blockages, we might come up with an excellent payment, and that's where we're going to do.
So we have one last question.
Sorry, yeah, sorry.
If potentially another 2,000 homes going in in Westgate from the other side of the field, would you have to come back and put more in?
No, so every, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but most developers now have open reach of one, if not one or two providers, so you can't actually buy a service, you can't buy anything other than a third fibre service for making it on the new build now. It used to be 30 homes or more, you, the developer could choose if it was 30 homes or less, they could go for a copper option. Now we don't give builders and developers the option, they either buy the fibre services to the home or they go to somebody else to build their network, but we do it, we do it at the same time and the development is built, so we wouldn't be able to go back.
So that should be part of what's called our new site proposal, so for the developers, lots to build that new site development, if it's 10 plus more homes, then we provide that service without cost to that developer. If they have open reach to come in, if it's 10 below, then that developer would have to contribute a charge.
But, I mean, that's a fibre.
It's all fibres in effect.
As far as, more this far, the actual development of 2,000 homes, the infrastructure and the dark network that we built whilst that development was being built, there was already a bit of fibre going down the entrance to that site, because there was a bit of fibre down the ground. So it literally be a joint between the old street fibre to the new site, so you might as well be in like a five metre pavement crossing, for example, and that would feed that side. I think the thing about us is that gas and water and telecoms, we all go at the same time. A lot of people would say we're, you know, that's important now.
Yeah, because I mean, we are probably, I mean, we're expecting some kind of development here. These people are here to ask to oppose that development, but being realistic, you know, it's in the local plan, it's actually central government, a directive from central government. And, you know, we've got to, you know, we've got to get ourselves in a situation where we're kind of negotiating these houses. But that will be, well, maybe up to 2,000, so it's. Actually, if that, if that event went ahead, and obviously we wouldn't influence, influence that anyway, shape or form. If that, if that got approved or didn't get approved, if, if that developer decided to go with open reach, then we would still be obliged to put that infrastructure in, same as the gas, the electric.
There's two points to that, I think, so the first thing is we overbuild our network.
Yeah.
So we're not building to 100% of homes today, we put enough fibre in the ground. Like if I could, if I could bring you a demonstration, a four and a half thousand copper cable is, that's the significance. A fibre is smaller, a fibre that does 29 and a half thousands. Well, one fibre cable does 29 and a half thousands to customers, is about the size of a biro.
Yeah, okay.
So we are, so we take out one of those, put in one of those, and we build the network for next 100 years, we won't be coming back, because we can just use the fibres in the room. It's important to stress though, because I don't want anybody to think that we think we're this big, all in comes, come, company. The developer of the new site development has absolute choice on who they want to provide, it may not be a DC or open reach network, they may choose Virgin, some of them have got, some developers now of certain size have actually got their own infrastructure build company, and they build their own networks. So.
Thank you so much, unfortunately we've run out of time in this section, but just to confirm, we will be sharing this information on social media and on our website, and we will make available links and contact details if anyone has any further questions, but thank you very much.
No, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you do it? Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Cheers.
Thank you for the tea as well, appreciate it.
Your tea?
I served him my long card.
I would like to say that the park made that before she landed.
What? Have a little plate, will you?
What's that?
More, will you get that?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry about that. Thank you very much. No, great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, right. Sorry, got confused between this and the next. Yeah, the master's next one. Okay, so, next we move on to the North Fanet Link Highway improvements scheme and public consultation. So, I'm looking to.
I understand that basically consultation closes tomorrow, and that it's for planning to, a member to come up with a statement in the course of the consultation on the month of Westgate.
Right.
So all the information has been sent out, so it's been discussed.
I started saying, I did read all online, it's long pages.
Yeah.
And I know that not everyone agrees with me, but I actually think the road, not the building house and things, but the road is a good idea. Classic example, we had one or possibly even two crashes on the Canterbury Road today. Councillor Scott as fireman attended one and caught people out their cars. That is because Canterbury Road gets far too congested, and so there's another road that went from Acre, Vertington, Fanet Way through to Margate, that would cut down the use on the Canterbury Road. I don't think I'm alone in thinking that it's, in principle, a good idea, there might be issues with some of this, and on a turn of bits, and it can make 100% sense, and yes, it does lead some roundabouts with roads going off into fields, which does tend to suggest they're there for future potential housing or building sites. But that aside, I think the road is a good idea. What do other people think?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that, you know, I've spent a lot of time on this. I've, this was first introduced sometime last year, and it was this Fanet Area Committee, where all, you know, where James Rafe and his team from Fanet, from Kent County Council came down to talk to us about this. And having gone through it, met James on several occasions, I think the essence of this is money. And the money is, you know, and if, and this won't be very popular, you know, if these houses are built, we have a duty to the people of Westgate to ensure that we maximise the amount of 106 money. The new, which Michael Dove did a press release on in March, the new community infrastructure levy, we have to maximise that. And the way that this scheme operates is that if we accept, because what they're going to get for this scheme is, is going to be built with, so this road which is over miles long, you know, 60 million, whatever it is. Part of it is going to be funded from central government, and the other part will be from 106 money. And if we accept, you know, this North Fanet Link, at this stage, so if we maybe give our support to this, unfortunately, we give our support to this, in the longer term, we can expect to achieve a higher level of 106 money, and the 106 money is for, you know, the schools, the medical centres, the community centres, the so on and so forth. I mean, when we first went on, you know, when this was first brought to the council, when I was here in 2019, one of the things that was kind of promised was 40% social housing. Now, the contractors have now put in, put themselves into position, they've got themselves into position where they're saying, well, there's going to be little or no housing, you know, no social housing, which is an absolute disgrace, and I wrote an article about this in the magazine etcetera. If we object to the, you know, if Fanet District Council object to the local plan, Fanet District Council will be pushed out of any negotiations at all. So we're going to end up in a disadvantaged, you know, I'm just trying to be realistic, you know, and thinking about the next 10, 20 years, and also our responsibilities, you know, to the people of Westgate. So what we've got to do is we've got to stand the negotiating table, our Fanet District Council and Westgate Town Council, and we've got to get the best deal we can. So.
Can I ask, tells of the TDC, what's their view on this?
Well, you know, their view is, yeah, I mean.
They haven't been a formal.
Yeah, they're just about to start, because there's, you know, administration, they're just about to start a review of the local plan. And the review of the local plan is to actually try and reduce the number of houses. You know, if there's a change of government next, well, whenever. You know, conservatives want, and I don't mean to be political, I'm not being political, I'm being practical, the conservatives want contractor led development. The Labour Party don't want contractor led development, their view is we want community led development. But this has to be, you know, there's a housing crisis, you know, being realistic, you know, in this country there's a major housing crisis which stems back to the 1980s with the sale of, you know, council houses.
Yeah, my, my view is, I'm kind of mixed, overall I agree with David, I think regrettably guys, it's a good idea. Anything that takes away from some of the traffic load that comes through towns. But then on the other side you say, well, we want it to come through because we want the tourism, so you kind of see that. And some aspects of this plan are, you can see that, for example, the road that's going to come into the back of Westgate and then detour right across Dandalyon to Integarlins as well, so it's building right across Greenbell. And the one in the road, similarly, the back of Vertington as well, it's going to be building in over Greenland, so I've got mixed feelings about some aspects of it, I think the actual archit, artery, the main artery, is a good idea. I'm just a bit wary about some of these builds on Greenland, but overall, if that's a year on air, would year you?
I would say with our current level of goals, we need it, and whether they build lots of houses or few more houses, we're going to need even more.
Well, I regularly drove, drive on, I used to drive regularly on Shotten Day Lane, going to Sandwich every day, and that road at certain times of the day is scary, it's a scary road.
And of course, we've got on Shotten Day, which they're looking at the new route, we'll go behind the higgy bits. Because there, we've got a farm in Boston, you sometimes do find a slightly bit of tracks that are coming up there that you can't see, and you'll get people from out of the area, 18 year olds trying to press them, but they're fast driving. I'm surprised it hasn't happened.
Yeah, they said they're going to improve Nash Road as well, I mean, I never drive on Nash Road anymore, simply because I've had too many wing mirrors disappear.
Yeah, it's a nightmare, and they've made it, what they had done, the end of Nash, they had to make it worse.
Yeah, it is worse than, yeah, it is.
Yeah.
So I never drive on that road at all.
So I've, I've looked at this mainly from the standpoint of, if, so what they're actually applying for KCC is funding from central government, so a bid for 60 million, now they can only apply for 85% of that, they're not allowed to apply for any more. So 85% of the 60 million they're applying for, the other 15%, they will inevitably ask developers because they're the people that are invested in the area and have the money, like they're not going to, not many people are going to offer this other 15% if there's nothing in their portfolio. So what I've been interested in is if they get the funding for the road, what is the difference in terms of money that is left in the 106 for the infrastructure? So for hospitals, for schools, etcetera, in comparison to if they don't get the funding? And then really a secondary issue on this is the, is this development going to happen? So if we can for now try and separate those two issues while I'm explaining this. If they get the funding, it means that more money will come from the government to pay for the road. Therefore, yes, they will have to put in the 15%, the developers will inevitably have to put in the 15% for the other part of the 60 million. Then that will leave the developers more money left over to put into infrastructure than if they had to pay for more of the road, and the difference is 36, if they don't get the funding, the developers need to pay 36 million into the road, if we do get the funding, the developers need to pay only 12 million in for the road, so that leaves quite a lot less. Then my question was, well, you know, obviously they're just going to try and keep their profits, aren't they? So they're not going to say, oh, now we've, we've got this money, now we're going to put it in for the road. But there's something called a viability assessment, which has already happened, it happens throughout the whole, the whole process apparently. And that's essentially an assessment which sees the viability of how much money should they be putting back into the community? And that is based on them having a 15 to 20% profit margin. Now, when their profit margin falls closer to 15%, they can argue, we don't have the viability to pay more into the infrastructure, and the thing that usually goes first in these circumstances, so I'm told by planning people at KCC, is affordable housing, so they keep up on the schools, they keep up on the hospitals, but will have less affordable housing. If obviously we get the funding, they've got more money in the pot, and through the viability assessment, we would suspect that we would have more money left over in the 106 and the external people that come in to assess the viability assessment will say, yeah, you've got this, you know, even with this profit margin of like 17 and a half, you should put this in for infrastructure, obviously if they've spent, you know, the difference is 12 million to 36 million, they're going to have left over, there's going to be less for infrastructure, probably going to get less affordable housing. So if we're going on the premise that this development, the redevelopment is going to happen in Westgate to a certain degree, then it would be more beneficial for the people of Westgate if the Fanet Link was funded more so by central government than by the developers. So then they'd have more money in the pot for infrastructure, that's my understanding. However, I think why this is a complex issue is because it's very much tied into this notion of, well, the development might not happen, and if we refuse, if we do not support the Law of Fanet Link, will that make the development, will that strengthen our chances of the development not happening? From my research into this, from what I can tell, the development is likely to happen because it's already in the local plan, which has been agreed and which has been externally verified. And even if TDC were to say, even if the leader of TDC were to say, I'm planning committee, we don't want this, the external verifier can come in and say, well, you're not meeting your targets of housing, this is a good opportunity, so we're going to put it through, and that's what they have done in the past. So then I come to the question of, if it's likely that this is going to happen anyway, if it's likely that even if TDC go against it, because we've got this kind of direction from the government, that they want these numbers in this way, then what is the way that we can make this be the least harmful to the community, and that's by trying to conserve as much money as we can for infrastructure? So I've come to the, I think I've come to the understanding myself after all that, that if we, if we try and separate these issues of the development and the North Fanet Link, if the North Fanet Link is going to go forwards, it would be much better for residents if this was funded centrally by the government. Even though on, you know, it seems like if you look into this topically, you'd think, oh, well, that just means that the government are paying and the developers aren't going to have to pay, but actually that money is going to come back into affordable housing easier.
And everything else.
Yeah, and I think that, I do think though, there needs to be a more nuanced and more complex conversation and a clearer communication to be had on this development, because I think general, local residents and even myself as a councillor, we're not well versed in the local plan and what that means, but from what I've looked into it, that's pretty, it's going to be very difficult for the council to come away from that local plan of these houses and this development. So I think it's likely that the development is going to happen in some format.
So, and please tell everybody, did you want to put forward? Yeah, did you want to put forward a statement of whether you in general agree or?
I think, one thing we could do, it's up to each other, one thing we could do is perhaps, rather than just comment on the Fanet Link, we could comment on the Fanet Link, but we could put it in the context, and we could also comment on the development, and we could say that we agree with, we agree with the application for central government funding for the North Fanet Link, however, we don't agree with the development plans, and we've got, we've got hesitations with that.
Yeah.
But I do understand that obviously, a lot of people may have the opinion that you can't separate these two issues, because.
Well, I don't think, there's, there's not a coincidence, you know.
No.
No.
I mean, no housing, no road, no road, no housing.
Yeah, they are inseparable.
Well, they're inseparable also because of the structure of the way that local gov, the way that the funding works. The way that the structure is built is that it's built in a sense that developers are working with, with government. And I think a lot of people want to separate those things, but the reality is the structure that we're in is very messy, and, you know, who else is going to fund that 15%? I'm sure they, KCC don't have the money for it, Westgate Downtown Council don't have the money for it.
Could we finish it with half a bill, so would they just build, say, the red road and then the blue roads don't happen? Could they, could they change their minds in terms of what they do and what they don't?
What the, what the.
In terms of this proposal, what we say?
I think if they, if they go with the funding.
Yeah, they'll build the whole thing.
They will have to, yeah, but it will be, apparently there's trigger points, so.
And if they don't go with the funding, something similar will happen, or maybe the same thing will happen, but it'll be in bits. You know, as sort of money.
That's my concern, is that you will get it in bits.
Yeah, and we don't want it in bits.
Yeah, I mean, if we think open reach is going to be a long time, for nine, 12 months, for them to do their stuff in Westgate, how long is this going to take? This is going to take forever.
Yeah. And I have tried to get clear about those viability assessments, but I'm told that there's already been, in order for the developers to put forward the plan, they already have to show their viability assessment, and that already means fixate rents. So apparently the, it's very, the numbers are very out in the open, and it's, they can't, you know, just like hide some money in this viability assessment, because it's done before, like, you know, years before, like, the primary ones already been done. So I'm told that, I'm sure, there's always ways that developers will find a way to save money, but I'm told that they are kept quite, we have to have the KCC and the local plan, and the developers have to have quite a lot of clarity over their, the money and the profit.
The cost of any kind of capital project like this, they'll quote a figure of 60 million or whatever, next week it'll be 70 million, the week after that it'll be 80 million, because the cost will have gone up.
Yeah.
So you know that will happen as well, so the numbers you quoted, that might be current today, but once it starts, you know those numbers will get bigger.
Yeah, they have told me that they factored in inflation, there's an algorithm that factors in rising costs, and that also, that changes as time, as time, so in every consultation or in every viability assessment, and they had, they catered that for five years, and that's based on the five years last inflation. So obviously we had a lot of inflation recently, and they've backed the same inflation for the next five years. So it has already gone up by, I think it was over, over 16 million, when they had to factor in those inflation.
Yeah.
We've got to come up with two firm words.
Are you proposing then a statement to say that, yes, in general, we agree with the funding, applying for funding for this road, and that not the development of the houses that it might support, have I understood that correctly?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you propose that just on.
Second one?
Yeah.
All in all? Yeah. And I just asked, I'm really sorry about this, do you not ever consider any of the ecological damage that this is doing?
Unfortunately, it isn't a public participation section.
I know, but we're sitting here, so we know who we are, and this is really frustrating, this is an ecological sanctioning on that.
You're welcome to email your concerns in, and it can be dealt with that way, but we can't take your comments at this stage of the meeting.
I apologize. Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, yes. Yeah. Okay.
And yeah, so just, I did talk to KCC and I did ask them, why, why are these developments where they are? Why are they going through Greenland? why, why are these developments where they are, why are they going through Greenland or Brown, uh, not, what do we call it?
Yeah.
Uh, and they, they said that basically it's because when they build developments, they're not going to build the developments far away from where the other urban town is. They will build it close and there's no, and close is the Greenland.
It's cheaper to build in Greenland than Greenland, it's as simple as that, it's cheaper.
Yeah.
Because you have to do work on the brown belt area first before you can do it. You have to do a lot of research and a lot of ecological crap. If you build on Greenland, you can just plough ahead straight away.
And I guess like, that would be, it would be more, I mean, even for the infrastructure as well, it would raise all the costs if we had a big gap in between what we have now in urban area and this new residential area.
The local council, that, uh, council, that power, meaning the power until the next race on the general, so.
Thank you very much, we'll, yeah, we'll move on to the next.
Yeah, and also we have to put that into change, do the bed on some more.
That's a good chance.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No problem.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so now to the mask. Okay, consultation, so review the proposal for the upgrade of the existing mask at 44 Station Road. Anybody got anything to say on this?
So is my question relevant for this one then, in terms of roaming, for anybody?
Yes, more so, yes.
So presumably anybody on 5G means that anybody on roaming will improve their experience in Westgate, which at the moment is a bit of a nightmare for most people?
It would just be depending on what network they're on.
Yeah, it's, it's 5G, it's just.